This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening. Welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Public Board Meeting for Tuesday, January 18th. Great day to be at Bruin. I'll call the meeting to order and we will start with a public hearing or special vote for the land purchase and capital reserve as has been advertised on the front lawns of the schools, as well as through some mailers and some electronic mailings. And I think Dr. McGowan, you're going to do an overview, a couple, three slides?
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. We're very pleased to be talking to you and the community about this opportunity. The opportunity specifically is from Park Center Properties that obtained an independent appraisal and approached the district about interest to purchase parcels of land currently owned by 12 Corners Presbyterian Church. Two different parcels you can see on the slide. Letter B is .92 acres and that runs parallel to the current Brighton High School parking lot. Includes about halfway over, maybe a little bit more in terms of the parking. If you think about the perpendicular shape of Newton and Witten and where that parking lot would line up, pretty much directly across from Newton, but if you're standing at Brighton High School parking lot to the left of the parking lot, and includes that current outbuilding from 12 Corners Presbyterian and Lot C right up to the JV baseball field. In fact, quite frankly, that corner of Lot C probably shows you right where the visitors dugout is. And the dugout probably overlapping already on that corner of the property. Protecting the green space on that end of the property and a unique opportunity provided to us by 12 Corners Presbyterian as neighbors to purchase that going forward. The proposed site, and I'm just reading this because it is a hearing, so I should be technically reading what we're talking about exactly. Proposed Lot B, proposed site contains a total of .92 acres and has a rectangular shape. Site is located on the northernmost portion of the church campus and has 99 feet of linear frontage on the east side of Witten Road South with a depth of 406 linear feet. The northern boundary abuts the Brighton High School parking lot and the southern boundary is mapped to be the center line of one of the entry points of the church campus. The topography of the site is level and even with the road grade, the parcel is covered with a lawn area with a few mature trees along the front and an asphalt paved parking area along the south and rear with striped parking spaces for 48 vehicles. The parking areas have three overhead light poles. A utility service box is located at the midpoint of the parcel frontage. And Lot C, proposed site contains a total of 1.36 acres and has an irregular shape and does not include any road frontage. The site is located on the easternmost portion of the church campus and has 352 feet of linear frontage along the existing church parking lot with a depth of 144 linear feet along the southern boundary, 194 linear feet along the northern boundary, and 338 linear feet along the rear property line which abuts the Brighton High School athletic field. The topography of the site is level and even with the continuous grade, the parcel is covered with a grassy lawn area with a few mature trees and there are no structures on this site. The proposed project budget. The legal representation is $6,000. MRB engineering fee was $650, I'm sorry, $6,500. Project management, $7,500. Miscellaneous administrative expenses, $2,000 for a total budget of $22,000. Appraised value of $400,000, and so their asking price of us is $422,000. So each of those fees, et cetera, are not amounts that we are contracting with somebody. They're part of the total sale price and their budget from 12 Corners Presbyterian. The source of the funds that we propose is using the district building reserve fund. The current balance of that is $6,6,526,594, and it requires voter authorization to withdraw. So I just want to make sure I make this point very clear. The reserves that the district have require voter authorization to withdraw the funds, the capital reserve. So that is why you have to vote to have people withdraw the funds. So different than when we, and currently still in the process of selling the Brookside property, that did not require, in fact, did not allow for a vote of the community unless compelled to through a majority of voters signing a petition. That is an entirely different process. So in case there's any confusion with people, why would you have a vote for one and not for another? This is required to withdraw the money from the capital reserve. So we're talking about $422,000 being withdrawn from a reserve of $6.5 million. Also important to point out to people that that has no impact on any kind of tax increase. Acknowledging that the money in the reserves comes from revenue at the end of the year or surplus revenue at the end of the year, which is composed of whatever is left over from state aid and all of our revenue sources, including and most importantly, tax revenue. So it is taxpayer dollars that certainly are already in that reserve. And we have several reserves, of course, set up that act as important savings accounts for situations just like this for a variety of reasons that you at the end of the year very publicly, very transparently designate how much money should go into the reserve at the end of the year from unspent money at the end of the budget year. But to withdraw that money then requires voter authorization. The appraisal used as a basis of the offer was prepared by Midland Appraisal Associates. Market value is defined as the most probable price which a property should bring in a competitive and open market under conditions requisite to a fair sale. Legal authority in the process, school board may obtain real property by gift, grant, device, or purchase. That's in education law. This is clearly a purchase. When authorized by a district meeting, school authorities of central school districts are authorized to purchase property as may be necessary for school purposes. The district meeting being a district vote. What are the procedures? Review the fair market value of appraisal, which was done. Pass a resolution that authorizes the district to enter into negotiations with the owner and to enter into a contract for the purchase contingent on voter approval, which you did at a prior meeting. Prepare and deliver a purchase and sale agreement with contingencies, which also has been done, and have a resolution of contingencies including obtaining voter approval typically requiring 60 days. Proposed timeline, which of course we're at the step now, the public hearing being January 18th tonight, and the date next week for the special meeting or the vote, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM here in this building, central office where the vote will be held. Other considerations, we're also on that, at that same time, asking the community to vote on the establishment of a new capital reserve. The current reserve has exhausted its funding limits. So when the community first voted for that capital reserve, they vote on the timeframe, the amount of time that that reserve would be in place, and the amount that it can be funded up to. The new reserve would have all additional contributions that may be made from year-end surplus, similar to what happens now, and proceeds from the sale of the Brookside property. So we're recommending the board establish a $20 million capital building reserve to have an estimated useful life of 10 years. Important to point out, we're not asking you to fund a reserve of $20 million. We're not asking you to designate at the end of the year, or you as taxpayers to fund $20 million. That is the upper limit of what that fund could have, right? So over time, that is the balance that it could have. That's the parameter. We're not asking you to designate $20 million and put it into a reserve at this point. This just literally sets up the structure for the savings account, the reserve that we would have. And the resolution would also be considered in the special meeting as a second proposition, which is what would be voted on next week. One other point that we have talked about and I want to make sure we share with people, if you look at Lot B, this would give us the opportunity for parcel B, we have not developed a plan for, you know, the architectural plans, the drawing, the environmental review, the work that would be needed. But if you take a look currently at where the exit is onto Witten Road, and those of you who have made particular left turn out of the high school driveway after an event, in the morning, in the afternoon, arrival dismissal times, this would give us the opportunity to explore creating a safer exit and entrance and to really study that further. But the space to do it, which right now we wouldn't have the ability to do that, we don't have the space to move that over and perhaps line it up with Newton and be looking at a traffic light, which we have begged for in the past, but because it's an offset driveway, in addition to the light being at Greenwich, the county, because it's a county road, has not, have not been willing to do that. This would give us the opportunity to look at that again and go back to them with a much better plan for what that could look like. Again, that's a possibility, but shows you and certainly communicates to the community why we would be interested in this particular property and going ahead with this and asking them to vote on that. Any questions from the board before we open it up for any comment as part of the public hearing?
No, we've obviously been having conversations about this for a few months now. And I say no, not from my perspective. I'll ask the board if there are any additional questions beyond the discussions we've had.
Great. Thank you. I'll take a seat. And we'll open it up for public comment and questions.
Yeah, so I'll make note of that. On the agenda tonight, there is the normal public participation as item three, but we are still on agenda item two, which is the public hearing. If there is comments or questions associated with the special vote next week or the proposed acquisition, still under agenda item two, we have the opportunity for participation specific to this subject. Again, agenda item three will be public participation for everything else. Oh, I've got a few folks who want to speak. Is there, without calling anybody out, is there anybody who'd like to make comments or ask questions with regards to the proposed acquisition? I don't have your name, so if you-
Monica.
Okay, great.
Do I need to stand up?
Yes, if you go to the podium, and I'm sorry, I'll, I'll put this in, I appreciate it, Monica. Thank you very much. If, when you come to speak, and this is for anybody in participation, agenda item three, if you could state your name and your town. Don't need to give your street address for security reasons. We'll go from there. Thank you.
My name is Monica. I live in Brighton. My, well, I know it's not a Q and A, so my concern is with parcel C. And as Kevin had mentioned, the dugout and what else. I don't know how, I guess, specific that shady area is that we are being sent, but it looks as though some of the fence and maybe even a little bit of one of the baselines is, you know, in the land that's being purchased. And so what is going to happen to that field if we don't get that land? Are we going to have to move our, you know, spend a bunch of money to take down the dugout, take down the fence, take down the backstop, move everything forward, you know, a few yards in order to continue to have that baseball field? Also, my question is, on the other side of it is the soccer field. Do we have the space to move the soccer field, or will we lose a whole soccer field because of the fact that part of our soccer field is on that land? You know, they were nice enough to let us use it, but now we're kind of used to it and possibly going to get screwed over by this. So I guess that's just my, again, I know it's not a Q and A, but that's, you know, where, where I'm coming from is what's going to be the additional cost to us if we choose not to purchase this.
I want to, I want to respond to part of this because you pointed out something that I'm not sure everybody understands. And I had two boys play baseball for 10 years. So the dugout in its entirety, but basically the visitors dugout and the tiny piece of the baseline and part of the fence have existed on the church property for a while. And the church, as a good neighbor just sort of said, and I'm paraphrasing, we're fine, like it's not an issue. So there's not necessarily defined answer to if we don't get it, what happens? Because in theory, anything could happen, but this is land that we're currently using in some segment. And I think it's important that you pointed that out. And I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, you said exactly what I would say. I mean, I think it's a good point. I don't, I don't know what would happen. I think that's an unknown, you know, and I don't, I think you bring up a really good point. I don't want to belabor it as if to scare people like, well, we better get it, otherwise we're going to have to tear everything up. Because I don't know, somebody could purchase it and say the same thing and say, you know, it's just, it's fine the way it is. It's just on the corner. But, but that is certainly part of our thinking is, you know, we're already using that space. It would be better to be able to protect our interest in that area like, like most people if they have an opportunity to purchase land adjacent to their land and protect the use of that space and think about how they can better use that space. It gives you some flexibility that way too. But yeah, you bring up a really great point.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions related specifically to the public hearing that we are holding? Yes, right there.
My name is Susan and I do live in Bruin. And I've come to this meeting very ill-informed. So your description of the acreage and so on didn't answer my basic wonder, and that is, what is the purpose of purchasing this land? What do you intend to do with it? And do you have any notion of what the church plans to do with it if they keep it?
And I'm sorry, Monica, you said your name was Susan, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the, let's talk about the two parcels. So parcel B is the one that runs right next to the parking lot and our-
Could we bring it up, Kevin?
Yes, I think that'd be helpful.
Can we keep referencing it?
Thank you for asking. So this parcel right here, I'm really going to start you guys off. You don't get the chance to move the camera or nothing. This is like an analog model right here. So this parcel right here, so the current Brighton High School parking lot exits right here. Many kids cross right here to come to school.
Oh, so your purpose is to get the crossing?
Hopefully, but I don't want to sell it to people as if we have a plan and that that's definitely going to happen.
Okay.
We don't know that, but that's what we would, in all likelihood, what we would want to do is to develop a plan to expand the parking lot into this space and be able to enter and exit right here, which would be directly across from Newton, and actually have a traffic light there.
Yes, I understood that part, but I didn't know. Okay, go on.
Right, so that's that parcel, right? And we can't do that without owning that property, which we don't. So when they came to us and presented this as an opportunity, we said, well, that's a unique opportunity to take a look at how do we improve the safety or income. The other parcel right here, parcel C, was offered with it. So they weren't offered as a separate transaction. They were offered together. And this currently is land that we are already on. So the concern to Monica's point is, if you didn't purchase it and somebody else did purchase it, would they be okay with you continuing to use that? And then what else could we do with this green space right here currently in terms of being able to expand use of the athletic field, which right now we could use? We have tremendous use of those fields. And to protect that from other developments. So if that is developed, for example, by somebody else that would be interested in this piece of property, which there are other uses of the property, the 12 Corners property over time that have been sold, would that then prohibit us from being able to use this in the way we currently use it, both for this field, but anything else that we would want to do in this space right here?
Okay.
The church's interest, I think to the second part of your question, and what would happen otherwise, we don't know for sure, other than it's clear to us that they are interested in gaining revenue from selling pieces of the property. They're not interested in selling the whole property or the building. But we are under the impression also that they're looking to lease space in the building to different programs and different community use, et cetera. So certainly it seems as though it's an effort to generate revenue to support their existence. I would guess that if we were not purchasing, we have the sense that they would be marketing it to other entities that would be interested.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Very much.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions related to the proposed acquisition? Okay. We will proceed to public participation. And I'll do the little speech I do every time, which is, we allocate generally three minutes per speaker. Ask you to identify yourself by name and town. You do not need to give a street address. And again, this is not set up as a debate. It's intended for us to receive feedback as your board and then take that feedback under advisement and review and respond as appropriate. If there's a factual situation that we can address, we will be happy to do that. So I've got three folks here lined up, and so I'll go ahead and call the first speaker that have, and I'm sorry, Dan Goldman, raise your hand, please, in the back there. If you'd like to speak, please contact Dan and he'll bring up a card and we'll be able to get you lined up here. First up, I have Karen Malecki.
Karen from Brighton.
Thank you.
When seeking a position in the school systems, most young people go into the educational professions for the love of children. Although the summers and holidays offer very enticing, I say that with jealousy as a nurse who's worked shifts, weekends, and holidays. The act of teaching and guiding our youth, seeing their faces light up, their curiosity, their innocence, and zest for life must have been felt in your hearts early on. I'm not a teacher, nor do I have any experience in school administration. I'm not even a parent or any school, of any school-aged children, as you might think. Why would I even concern myself with what happens at the Brighton School Board meeting? The answer is very simply, because I care. I care about my community. I am fully vested member of this community. I pay taxes here. For those taxes, I expect to feel safe, have access to the services that my taxes help pay, pay for, and have a say in the current and future direction of my community. When I see that my share in this investment is being used to take us in a destructive direction, I feel compelled to get involved. This is my community. It's built on a foundation of services that consist of infrastructure, security, emergency services, commerce, and education. Arguably, the most important of these pertains to the future of our community is education. My tax dollars, our tax dollars, pay for all of this. When we see the huge amounts of money that are talked about being used to implement new and questionable education programs or health policies, we need to keep in mind that all that money is from the taxes that we pay into. So how is our money being used? On March 27th, 2020, Congress passed and the president signed into law the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. The CARES Act created an education stabilization fund to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus, under which New York State has received $1,137 billion in elementary, in elementary and secondary school emergency relief, ESSER, also known as ESSER funds. This was the most money ever given to school by the government. In December 2020, the CDC released a support, a report saying it would only cost $25 million to get every single school in the U.S. to be up and running. To date, schools have received over $2 billion. It has, it was used to help schools with things like tele-school, to help kids attend school online, which was great to do. The money also went towards a lot of health-related issues such as improved sanitation. But if COVID was so deadly and masks are so necessary, then why are there not any oxygen hazmat bins in the schools? The issue can't be about health and safety like we've been told. The elementary and secondary school emergency relief total is more than $12.5 billion. New York State received more than $1 billion. Brighton School District got $6 million on the CARES, about $3 million on the ESSER, another 3, 3,700 on the GREER, and ARP was 2.5 million. That's a total of $12 million. In the American Rescue Act, in order to receive the elementary and secondary school emergency relief money, every state had to submit their district's plans. These plans have to be submitted every six months through September of 2023. In order to get the money, New York State school districts have to prove they are fulfilling the following requirements: universal masking of children, physical distancing, hand washing and respiratory etiquette, cleaning, contract tracing, quarantine and isolation, diagnostic screening tests, and vaccination for all students, staff, and teachers. This is why school districts are getting the money, to mask and scare the kids and eventually vaccinate them for all, for a disease that has a 0% death rate. This has nothing to do with health and safety. It's designed to cripple our children, and every single state is doing this. There's lots more. The Elementary and Secondary School Relief Fund is also pushing first critical race theory.
Ms. Malecki, I'm sorry, you're at the five-minute mark. I wanted to give you a little bit of extra time, but you're now at the five-minute mark.
Okay, I'll speak quickly. The critical race theory, theory is rebranded as social emotional learning into our public schools through these federal grant monies. This is a free race theory for white educators.
Thank you. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you very much.
I'll finish next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lou, can you, what is the exact amount of our ESSER allocation?
There's three different funding sources as you said. We present claims posted whenever needed.
Right. Just want the dollar amount.
Yeah.
Next up, I have Malaney Bernhardt. Malaney, if you wanted to get up and be prepared, and I just want to wait for Lou to provide a number to Dr. McGowan, please.
Sure. So I enter the GEAR funds, the latest round is $335,000. The Carissa, the ESSER funds is $2.9 million approximately, and then ARP funds, $1.8 million. So that's what's going direct to the schools. The allocation may be going to the state, whatever the difference is, but that's our direct allocation.
So it's ballpark, it's $5.3 million, $5.2 million, not, not $12 million?
I called Albany and that's what they told me?
I'm just telling you, that's the money that we're getting. So I, we don't bank on some of the numbers that they give us either. So I would say to you, that's the number we're getting. We're not required, there is no vaccine requirement, COVID vaccine requirement. There are mandated vaccines in the state of New York, measles, Mumps, rubella, the typical series that children get. So I don't know if it's referring to that, but there is no, no COVID vaccine requirement whatsoever. And there is not a 0% death rate. So purely speaking factually, I just want to point those three things out. Thank you. Oh, and one other point, sorry. There is nothing about critical race theory whatsoever. We have a culturally responsive curriculum. We do not teach critical race theory. Those terms do not exist in our space. That is a term used by critics of the work that we are doing, that we are, that is not the actual work we're doing. Social emotional learning is a very specific approach to supporting students and children throughout their curriculum and their mental health. Has nothing to do with race, racism, et cetera. So just want to make sure I'm pointing those things out factually. But thank you. Yeah, social emotional learning, correct. Has nothing to do with critical race theory. We'd be happy to get you information on what it is, though. Okay.
Hi, Malaney from Brighton. I'm just, I know last time I read a letter from a doctor. This time I'm going to read one from a nurse that I found. And I know the vaccines aren't mandated yet, but I always like to put this out there so that people are paying attention because there are bills out there where they are trying to pass mandates for children. So this nurse, she said, among all the vaccines I have known in my life, diphtheria, tetanus, measles, rubella, chicken pox, hepatitis, meningitis, flu, pneumonia, and tuberculosis, I have never seen a vaccine that forced me to wear a mask and maintain my social distance even when you are fully vaccinated. I have never heard of a vaccine that spreads the virus after vaccination. I have never heard of rewards, discounts, incentives to get vaccinated. I never saw discrimination for those who didn't. If you haven't been vaccinated, no one has tried to make you feel like a bad person in the past. I have never seen a vaccine that threatens the relationships between family, colleagues, and friends. I have never seen a vaccine used to threaten livelihoods, work, or school, or healthcare workers. I have never seen a vaccine that would allow a 12-year-old to override parental consent. That's not in New York, but that is in some other states. After all the vaccines I listed above, I have never seen a vaccine like this one, which discriminates, divides, and judges society as it is. As the social fabric tightens, it is a powerful vaccine. It does all these things except immunization. If we still need a booster dose after we are fully vaccinated, and we still need to get a negative test after we are fully vaccinated, and we still need to wear a mask after we are fully vaccinated, and still can become hospitalized- are fully vaccinated, and still can become hospitalized after we've been fully vaccinated, it will likely come to eventually it's time to admit that we've been completely deceived." And the reason I've brought that is, I know with the recent Omicron going around, I know a lot of you know, teachers, friends, students who were vaccinated and unvaccinated, all are catching this thing. Viruses are here to stay, and I think we need to learn how to live with them, and ask where your line is in terms of how many boosters are you willing to take, how long are you willing to wear a mask? And I do appreciate the latest COVID update did not encourage vaccination and continued boosters. I did appreciate that. It did, however, have the antigen take-home tests, which is, again, personal choice, and I got that you did put that out there. I don't know if people are informed that those are not FDA-approved. It says so right on their website. So based on a previous speaker who had said, "Do your homework," I do recommend always researching and asking questions and never stop. It is not FDA-approved. It's approved under emergency use authorization. Same with the vaccines. They are not officially FDA-approved. You call Moderna, Pfizer, the CDC, FDA, and ask the question, and you get some very interesting answers. And when something's under emergency use authorization, there must always be choice, which is great. You have always encouraged choice. But I do start to see just a little bit of pitting against each other whether you're vaccinated or not. And I don't know if you see it in the schools, but I've seen it out and about. So I just want people to continue to do their research, ask questions. The ingredients on the antigen take-home test, you can Google those, and they're, one of the chemicals, the Triton X100, is actually banned in the U.K. They're trying to develop a better chemical because that one's an endocrine disruptor. And those are going home in our children's backpacks. So that is my concern, that if you want to send these home, this is great, but it should say these are not FDA-approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Malaney, we gave people the opportunity to pick those up if they didn't feel comfortable sending home in the backpacks. And you're right, the last update did not give vaccine information other than to thank people for getting vaccinated and wearing masks in order to slow the spread and protect themselves and those around them. And we would encourage, continue to encourage people to do that to the best of their ability. We do know, factually speaking, that the infection rate, and more importantly, the hospitalization rate, is lower in those that are boosted, vaccinated, and then certainly boosted as well. Again, factually speaking, so thank you for that.
I'm from Berman.
I'm from Berman, Brighton resident. Board President Larry Davis, has the Brookside School Building sold as of today, January 18th?
No.
It hasn't closed.
Proposition two-
I'm sorry, there's a clarification there. I should say it differently. It hasn't closed yet.
Okay. So you haven't received funds for it. Understood. Thank you. Proposition two clearly states that you're requesting an additional $20 million from the taxpayers to fund a capital reserve account, of which 4.2 million would be funded by the sale of Brookside School.
Mr. Berg, could I just interrupt you? I just don't want people to get the wrong information. The authorization is to create a reserve account that would have a limit of $20 million. It's not to fund it. But that's an important distinction, because I wouldn't want people getting the impression that we're asking for $20 million.
So it has a limit of, so 4.2 million will be funded by the sale of the Brookside School with a balance of $15.8 million to be potentially funded using surplus dollars, which would result, which results every year when the district overbills the community and then redirects those surplus dollars into the reserves, rather than paying down the tax levy resulting in less school taxes for the following year. Since the Brookside has not sold, to request that the community vote on a funding source, which hasn't been realized, is unethical. And it's unlawful. On November 30th, 2021, the Board of Education unanimously approved a motion to approve the resolution of a special vote, and I have concerns about how the information was disseminated to the community. The beginning of the meeting contained 30 minutes of blank video footage. The vote was done at the tail end of the video, and no presentation was given. Dan Goldman, the Communication Coordinator, waited 17 days to post information about the special vote on the school's Facebook site, which occurred on December 17th, 2021, and on a Friday, right before the weekend. Regarding the land purchase in Proposition One, the intended usage of the land was not disclosed at the time. In addition, there were no details regarding the public hearing taking place tonight. After I posted my concerns, Dan Goldman would post the same Facebook presentation three more times, including a vague response to the land usage. And only on the final post, which occurred on January 11th of this year, did he mention the day of today's public hearing, a whopping seven days prior. Today, there was no information presented by the school district about today's public hearing until 3:45 PM, when Kevin McGowan shared a "Just So You Know" video, which as of 5:47 PM, had 81 views on YouTube. This is paramount to voter suppression. Limiting the dissemination of information to the public and doing so in a way that is untimely, vague, and lacking transparency in order to keep the community uninformed and uneducated. It's simple. He who controls the narrative controls the vote. As Lou Alamo, the school assistant superintendent, AKA the accountant, AKA the Freedom Information Officer, once told me, "The law doesn't require you to understand what you're voting for." And Superintendent Kevin McGowan, and the Board President Larry Davis, along with the Board of Education, who enable this behavior, are counting on it. I recommend that the vote be delayed until such time that the Brookside property sells and a presentation is offered to the community. And what the proposed $20 million may be used for. In the last five years, almost 75 million of new debt has been leveraged on behalf of the Brighton taxpayers. Enough is enough. I'd be happy to wait out and sit, I'd be happy to stand up here if you have any rebuttal.
Well, I just want to point out, you used a quote that Lou said to you, something along the lines of, and please correct me, I'm sure you will, about the law doesn't require voters to understand what they're voting on, and that Kevin McGowan and Larry Davis are counting on that? Right? Is that accurate that you just said that?
I think you're, I think you're, I think you're taking two things and putting together that are disjointed.
No, I'm repeating what you combined as two things that you put together.
I'd be happy to reread it for you.
No, that's okay, it'll cause more confusion. I want to point out that the quote that he may have said to you in a much longer conversation that you had with him several years ago, about the information that we provide to the community, and you pressuring over and over and over again about what are you doing to make sure people understand it, and you combining that tonight in a way to say, "And Larry Davis and Kevin McGowan are counting on it," makes it sound like he actually said to you that Kevin McGowan and Larry Davis are counting on that, which is misleading. So I just want to make sure we're clear that you may have quoted in an earlier conversation, we've never counted on people not understanding something. In fact, we would hope, let me just finish, though. We would hope that people have a great understanding of the opportunity presented, of what it will cost people. You know, because we provide you with a tremendous amount of information regularly, we will talk to anybody, anytime, which actually you've criticized before when I've said that to people. We literally will answer every question that people have, and be there for people, and provide all the information that people are looking for. We've provided information about this many, many times, including the postcard that went home. You didn't mention this communication that went to every resident.
Right. It went out on the 11th, which actually talked about today's get-together. What I was saying, and I'll repeat myself, is that-
Well, let me just finish also. If you go back to the fall, when we first had the introduction of this possibility, at a board meeting in public session, this presentation was given back in November. So the date for tonight was first proposed on that evening. So all along, and you mentioned, you know, things like it was presented on a Friday. We send out an e-news every single Friday. That's when the e-news is posted.
Kevin, how many voters would you estimate are in the Brighton Central School District?
I don't know off the top of my head.
So can I interrupt for a second? Public participation is not meant to be a debate.
That's correct.
Mr. Berman has been allowed to give-
That's fair.
-his participation. He's participated, and I'd propose that we move on with our meeting.
Well, I didn't debate him. He debated me. I simply presented some information.
I'll respond to all those things. Pretty much a lifelong member of this-
Well, there's approximately 25,000 district voters.
A lifelong member of this community. And Facebook and emails does not constitute- I've never misled anybody in this community in my life, ever.
Well, you know what? You know what? The three postings from Mr. Goldman that did not talk about today's event would suggest otherwise. Okay? Take a look at them. Look at the three posts and explain to everybody here in the room why you didn't go out and announce the date for tonight. It wasn't until the fourth post, which was done on January 11th, and the postcard that went out. You know, this is no different than when the pandemic took place.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. I appreciate your point of view.
And there was one absentee ballot sent to each house.
I'm very confident in our communication cycle for all of these things.
Right. But there's 25,000 voters. All right?
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Exactly.
Just one more point of clarification I want to make, because this is important. It was said that the setting up of a reserve was unlawful. That is absolutely incorrect. The setting up of the reserve actually is exactly what the district is supposed to be doing, to have a reserve in place that could be funded when we receive those revenues. And in no way is that unethical or unlawful. As a matter of fact, it's considered good practice. So I thought it was important to point that out also.
Appreciate that. Okay, item four, actual approval of tonight's agenda. There was a motion made to amend the agenda to add an item five, which is a resolution of a pay increase for our hourly staff. So I'm going to go back to four for a second, and ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda with the addition of item five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we'll go to agenda item number five. This item is the resolution to adjust the pay of several of our hourly employee groups in order to remain competitive in the marketplace and continue supporting our staff that does so much important work in the district, based on the details provided in the memorandum. And I'll say specifically, it reads in, I'm going to pull it. "Resolved that the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District authorizes the superintendent of schools to enter into memorandums of agreement with the respective labor associations in order to adjust current hourly wages, as outlined, in order to be competitive with the changing labor market conditions impacting the recruitment and retention of employees paid on an hourly basis." Think anybody who reads any of the papers out there knows that we are in a competitive labor market right now. The wages we pay are a critical component of that market. And it's important that we've got sort of our ear to the ground, as it will, as it were, and that we are in tune with how we're going to maintain these employees who do so many great, do so much great work for our kids and our staff as well. I can go ahead and send this, yeah. So motion to approve, I'll pull the exact agenda so I get the wording correctly here. Motion to approve the resolution for approval of pay increase for our hourly staff.
So moved.
Moved by Jolene.
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes. Oh, that's next. Item six, approval of the minutes from January 4th, 2022, the education meeting. We've had a chance, and have had those minutes for a couple of weeks now. Everybody's had a chance to review them. Does anybody have any changes to those minutes? Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Esther.
Second.
Seconded by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, item seven is a budget review. We'll ask Lou Alamo, please, to go through an initial budget review for us.
Okay, good evening. So this is a, picks up from where we started at the November budget outlook meeting, and it's the next level of detail in our budget development process. So what we outlined before is our process using this cycle, which we show every year. So we're at the point right now where we're designing plans, and then we're determining the financial capabilities. And that's kind of what I outlined in the presentation in the subsequent slides. First, we have the key budget guidelines that we're building our primary assumptions on. And what I highlighted in green is the additions to this year's key budget guidelines. So understanding the revenue and expenditure risk related to COVID and potential future funding cliffs related to the infusion of federal funds. So as the community member spoke before, we are receiving federal dollars. And in addition, where I think the $12 million reconciles to is that the state is using federal funds to pass through into foundation. So that's probably where the $12 million is coming through. That's coming through our basic foundation aid and through state aids. So we need to understand the impacts of that, both at the state funding level and the direct allocations that are coming to Brighton. Certainly our blueprint, which we're going to have a presentation later today, and the priorities that are outlined there. And then commitment by the Board of Education to comply with the New York State Property Tax Cap and understand its long-term impact on financial planning. This is the budget development calendar that the Board approved back in October. You can see where we are right now is budget development process, the enrollment projections, which we touched on before, and the preliminary budget and revenue expenditures. Based on all the moving assumptions right now, I do not have a preliminary budget for you, so unlike typical presentations of the past, I usually give a number at this point, saying this is my best estimate at this point in time. We're still working through a lot of the assumptions, so I don't have a number for you right now as our starting point. We'll be building that as we build the revenue assumptions and continue to process the macro assumptions that are used in tonight's presentation. Excuse me. So then you see all the opportunities for input and presentation at public meetings. So this is what we're working through right now. We're working through the known budget factors, and again, the plans being designed as we outlined in that cycle, understanding what our needs are, mandates, program priorities, the staff that's in response to that. We're looking at special education services, the emerging needs of our students, trying to understand, understand those, and the programs that are required, that are being designed. What we don't know, and this is a big part, is the contractual labor increases, the recruitment and retention pressures. The action that the Board of Education took tonight is helping with that, but we have many contracts that expire at the end of June, so building in those assumptions for the financial model is still yet to be determined. The increased demand for specialized transportation. As you know, the mandate for transportation is 50 miles. There is program shortages in the Monroe County region, so our program folks are finding available programs that student needs. So we have had requests for specialized transportation with driver shortages. That is, that is a financial pressure that we're working on computing. The pension contributions, the rates are going up in the TRS and the ERS, so we're factoring that. So as wages increase, we know that pension costs will also increase based on the state or the pension plan's contribution rates. Health insurance rate estimates, we look at our participation in our plans, and then we try to guess, guess really, because it's going to be what the January 23 rate increase will be. So inflation trends for medical inflation have about 8.5% in our plan. So we're beginning to factor that in along with our plan mix. The current inflation rate, this is something we're monitoring closely, it's going to be the gas that we pay for our buses, paper costs, custodial supplies, everything that we're consuming as a business, we are seeing inflationary increases. So we're trying to factor that in as we look at our decentralized department budgets and trying to factor those in. And the allowable tax levy growth, it's not greater than 2%, it is 2%. So we know that inflation, once it's over the 2%, the tax levy limit, the growth factor that's maximized, the maximum, is 2%. So we know, have a sense of what our, what our revenue will be from property tax growth. And again, like I said, the factors to be assessed, changes in mandate, student services and plans, a lot of programming decisions are made in January, February, and March timeframe, so we try to understand the impacts on that. The student elective demands, particularly at the high school, the courses that will be offered, student selections, that has an impact on staffing. And then again, the changes in state and federal aids, the promise of fully funding foundation aid, that is something that we are banking on, is the full funding of foundation aid. How the state is doing that, though, is something that we're looking carefully at, and, you know, we're cautiously optimistic that they're going to have a plan to wean themselves off of federal funds as well. And again, I talked about the funding cliff for federal funds. Enrollment, we presented what our enrollment trends are. We do see a decline from our hybrid model in '21, '22. We saw the forecast for '21, '22, and then we see stability going out. So about 3,500 students is what we're building the multi-year staffing plan for, and then responding to mandates and changes in student programs. The impact then on elementary class size, this is a ratio that we show each year to look at our staffing, and then the opportunity class size impact if we add one teacher or we reduce one teacher. So these are the ratios that we're looking at. As of right now in the preliminary budget, we're maintaining consistent staffing at 65 general ed- now in the preliminary budget, we're maintaining consistent staffing at 65 general education teachers at the K5 level. The financial trends, and again, this is a big, this is an important point to look at our budget to actual results. Certainly when we look at the original budget, where that's going up, we see increases over the last couple of years as we've brought on more debt. And then we look at the margin between the two. So the actual average increase, 3.1% versus the average budgetary increase. And we're trying to always be cognizant of what those margins are and what the budget surpluses are. As we look at that, we also look at the bottom line, which is the current budgeted reserves. So we have $3 million that we appropriate each year. We know we need to maintain that going forward in future years. So then we're also looking at the risk of, of operation. So those are the key metrics for the district is looking at the budget to actual, and then the, also the impact on appropriated fund bills. When we look at the tax levy, we've seen an increase over the last couple of years and that's as our tax levy limit has increased as we brought in more debt. And that's an allowable exclusion to the property tax cap. And then we've seen increases in foundation aid, we've seen increases in our reimbursable aids, so we see an average of 6.9% over state and federal aids. So looking at this and the foundation of our, of our budget, just looking at the object level now. Certainly we're a people, a people industry, so we're looking at our personnel costs. Those are closely related to our employee benefits, about 70% of our budget allocations. Then we look at the services that are provided in the orange here, and we're looking at the, the growth factors and inflationary factors that are in there. On the revenue side, you can see our primary revenue sources, a real property taxes, no surprise, and then we have state sources which are driving it. Within here is the sales tax, not a huge opportunity for growth within that area. So the pressure really is always on property taxes and our state sources. Our starting point, looking where the budget allocations are. So just to give you a sense, the 70% salaries and benefits disaggregated into the areas. So when we're deep diving into our, where we're spending our money, we're looking at obviously the programs, and then we're looking at opportunity savings, looking for opportunities for optimization. So we have our teaching staff, instructional support staff, which are paraprofessionals, academic support instructors, and we have our non-certified, our classified staff, non-teaching staff, seven. So that's our custodians, clerical staff, and administrative staff, three percent. Again, we look at all the areas. Our debt and capital at this point is a fixed cost, so we know what that's going to be over the next couple of years. We look at and disaggregate our BOSI's services, most of which is driven by transportation costs and special education costs, and also our technology spending. So here's the working budget assumptions that we're, we're building, the preliminary, preliminary budget. We're, we're looking at the salaries and wages, rolling board, current staffing levels, and what we can predict will be future mandated positions in response to student needs. We're continuing to adjust for the increase in minimum wage. We think that's going to go up another 70 cents next year, based on what we're seeing at the macro levy. So we're trying to stay ahead of that minimum wage to be competitive from a recruitment and retention standpoint. And again, the hourly, what was presented tonight, error positions that are competitive across industries, our clerical staff, our buildings and grounds, maintenance, maintenance, our paraprofessionals who are providing direct support to students. We're looking at the health insurance. Again, we look at our selection mix, and we look at medical inflation trend. TRS, we see the increase, which as wages go up, the pension contribution has an increase on that as well. BOSI's, they're struggling as well with staffing and retention, so they're trying to also compete in the labor market. So we're seeing increases in their labor costs that has passed along to us. So we're seeing 4%, 5% possibly in transportation, considering the fuel impact, and then 3.5%. That's their macro budget parameters that they're staying, trying to stay within. Debt service, again, our financial planner gives us those numbers. Equipment, generally zero-based budging. Our departments do not get an allocation for equipment. They justify what they're asking for on an annual basis. And then our department allocations, generally we're holding the department allocations, the decentralized budgets to what is this year, and then we're responding to inflationary adjustments if needed. As we talked about at the Outlook Meeting, this is our capital project planning. So we have our debt, we have our building aid, and then we have the net impact on the levy. Prior to the capital project, we were receiving more building aid than we were reinvesting in our buildings. With this capital project, we built up an investment in our buildings that was about 2% contribution to the tax levy. So that's what we presented as part of the 2017 project, is about a 2% increase in property taxes to have a consistent investment in our facilities. And our long-term plan is to maintain that portion of the tax levy for investment in our, in all, each of our school buildings. So this is the plan to be able to do that. And when we're looking out, we could see that our debt begins to fall off, and then there's a decision to be made, a business decision to be made by the district. There either we reduce our investment in our facilities, and we reduce the tax levy, or we maintain that portion of the tax levy that's committed to investment in our facilities. So that's something that we'll have an annual conversation over, but right now we have stability in the impact on our, in our property taxes, relate, specifically related to capital. This is the preliminary tax cap calculations. So you can see we're going into the 22, 23. The number that I don't have at this point to finalize that is the capital exclusion for our BOSI's. So I have to get that number, but generally I know the other components of it. So you can see what our starting point is, and you can see the allowable tax levy limit is just about that 2%, 2.07%. We get very little growth in a tax-based growth factor, based on our tax base within the Brighton and the small parts of Pittsburgh that represent our school district. And we lock in now, I see, for the foreseeable future at the allowable growth factor of 2%. Remember, it's the, the lesser of CPI or 2%. So we're going to be stuck at the 2%. I don't see stuck judgmentally, I just think that's where we're going to be over the next several years if inflation continues the same way it's, it's trending right now. So then our next steps. Again, my responsibility is to present and to quantify all of these assumptions into a budget document. We're continuing to scrub every month. We look at budget to actual projections, see where there's opportunity to manage those margins, and to start, start with our baseline budget. And to do that, we collaborate with our building principals and department managers, assess opportunities for efficiencies, and evaluate impact of cost reduction strategies to, we're just not going to accept inflationary adjustments or say, oh, what can we do to offset those, those increased costs for the consumables or the services that we're procuring? The plan is to develop a community thought exchange to be launched next month and reviewed in, in March. And then we, it's our responsibility to continue to advocate for, for the funding levels. Make sure the state fulfills its promise for foundation aid, that they're thoughtful and, and planning for the drop-off in federal funds. So we're not seeing that swept out of, out of the foundation aid and impacting their ability to meet the basic state aid that the formulas require. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. McGowan, or entertain any questions.
I take the, you know, the other next step, I know Lou mentioned this, but we're just tonight, about an hour ago, getting runs from the state in terms of what our state aid looks like. So we'll be able to give you a much better picture as we go in the next couple of presentations as to what that big dynamic is coming from the state, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lou.
Thank you, Lou. Appreciate that. It's completely appropriate that we'll be getting a blueprint update next. Blueprint, as we often state, is our update. It is the list of our priorities. It is where we focus our energies and time, and it will inform the budget in terms of how dollars are spent. So very excited to get some updates on the existing blueprint from Dr. Ryu, Lou Alimo, Deanna Spagnola, and Betsy Balling.
Hello. We are going to provide some updates again, following some of the same slides as the fall, but just to give everyone an overview, of just our district priorities under academic rigor for all, our systems and DI work, and mental health and wellness. And Lou and Deanna and Betsy will jump into the other two categories. And I'll start today with academic rigor for all. So again, here's our goal for this year, our objective for all of our students and our faculty, maximizing their potential based on needs and interests. We'll focus on being culturally responsive and celebrating and accepting differences, and support developing a growth mindset by all. Just to touch base again, as we get started today, around what culturally responsive and sustaining education is. And it's really grounded in the theory that we are looking at all forms of diversity in our students, race, social class, gender, language, sexual orientation, nationality, religion, ability, and more. And we are recognizing them as assets for teaching and learning. So as we get into our work around culturally, around academic rigor for all, we'll talk about culturally responsive and sustaining education and building opportunities to learn for faculty. And one piece where we've been focusing our work this year is through Curriculum Council. And Curriculum Council has taken on the task of digging deeper into habits of mind, and looking at how to extend habits of mind and the work that's been done so fabulously at Council Rock beyond that into Front Road and the middle school and the high school. Earlier this year, year, we had Greg Alwess come to do a presentation on growth mindset and habits of mind. He has done a lot of research around growth mindset and brought that to our work together on Curriculum Council. And right now, we're getting into establishing what it would look like to have this common language around habits of mind for our students as learners in all four of our school buildings as we move into next school year. So we're kind of looking at the bigger picture of how do we kind of build this out over time, and the benefits of having students have this common language amongst themselves, and also for our faculty, because we see the great results from our students at Council Rock as they come up to Front Road. I'm not going to read through this whole thing, but just to give you a little visual, this was put together by Maria, our director of our teacher center, and kind of pulling into light just all the pieces that we're working on in the district around equity, student agency, and looking at each student as individuals and allowing us to reach their individual needs. Culturally responsive and sustaining education, which I talked about already, but looking at the assets that students bring to the work and habits of mind. So all of these pieces kind of tie in together and are really the bigger picture of equity that we're looking at for all of our students. As we continue our work, we're looking at opportunities to learn for faculty. We're continuing our school-based equity teams, and Betsy Balling will talk a little bit more about this in her part of the presentation. But we are partnering with Panorama Education to do a culture and climate survey of staff, students, and families, in hopes that that will help give us some really good data to continue to drive our work, because we want to hear from our students, from our staff, from our families, about how they feel about our school environment. And that'll be a big piece of the work that we do. And for our faculty, we'll continue our learning on our April Superintendent's Conference Day, where we will really let faculty have choice around the professional learning they do, around diversity, equity, inclusion, social, emotional learning, lots of different opportunities for them, outside speakers, and presenters, and teachers, and staff within our district offering sessions that day as well. So that will be a day where they can dig into whatever they're interested in, kind of in their own learning path. And as we continue to share opportunities for families, we are looking at PTSA meetings scheduled throughout the spring to share an update of the equity teamwork with each of the four school buildings. So more to come on that as we enter the spring. In the land of actual curriculum, we are continuing to, already, we're already in summer. So it's January right now. We've already stepped into like, what are we looking at next summer? We did a lot of work last summer revising units within the CRSE framework. And right now, we're looking at across ELA in all of the buildings, what texts we're using for our students, what units they are kind of connecting to, and making sure we have a good scaffold up through the grade levels, and thinking about our unit revisions for summer has already begun. We continue to try to support individualized student learning, coming back to school this year. We have put into place, the last time I presented, we were just getting, rolling out FEV tutoring for all of our students. We have that up and running now. Students can receive support anytime after school, after 3:00 PM to midnight, on the weekends, whatever they need. When they're stuck on an assignment, when they have a question, they can pop on for some on-demand tutoring. And we've had several students accessing that, quite a few actually. In addition to considering it as an option for our students who are in quarantine or home because of COVID, it's just another resource for them to use. So what's next for us? School-based equity teamwork will continue throughout the school year, really diving into that assessment of the curriculum and instructional strengths and needs of each school building, and using that culture and climate survey data with Panorama. And then another piece of our spring conference day will to be looking, we'll be looking at developing a toolkit of resources for teachers and faculty around culturally responsive practices and tools for student learning. So lots more to come, even though we're halfway through the year. Thanks. Any questions?
No, it's an impressive slate of work, though.
All right, next up, Lou.
So under the systems work, we have a couple of updates, looking at, in the area of diversity, equity, inclusion, health and wellbeing, and then alternative learning, alternative learning environments. So specific to our hiring practices, in year one of our work, we built the playbook. In years two and years three, we've been executing the playbook. We're now really in year four, and our partnership with ReCenter is creating the opportunity for, for an audit, if you will, using my, you know, kind of the technical background, an audit of the work. So what we're going through is everything we've been doing, really these last two years, getting ReCenter's take on it. Really, what questions are you answering? How have you changed your hiring committees? What have you been, what have you been doing? And then it's an opportunity for us to reflect on our practice the last couple of years and refine what we have in that playbook. And again, another opportunity in this hiring season to execute. What we have, the opportunity, is more data this year. So what Dr. Ryu talked about was using the culture climate survey from Panorama. That's going to be a great data tool for our Hiring Practices Committee to, to utilize, as well as the work that's happening at the building level committees. We've been really at the macro view, looking at things big picture. And again, to really understand what's happening at the buildings, the effectiveness of, of the work from a hiring practices perspective, we need that feedback from the buildings. And the building equity team model gives us a great opportunity and insight into that. School start time. So what we just completed was a community thought exchange on the school start, start time, and a scenario that stemmed from the 16, 17 school year. And so we met on Janu-, or January 13th to review that thought exchange. And we looked at it based on the feedback from several stakeholder groups. We looked at it from faculty perspective. We looked at it from parent perspective at both the secondary and the elementary levels. And what we did is we, we tried to theme the concerns that we heard in the, in the thought exchange, and we've developed action plans or strategies on how to best represent the information, or strategies that mitigate the concern and the theme of the concern that we heard. So, for instance, we heard a lot from the Council Rock community about concerns of moving their school day earlier. So what can we, what can we do in, in response to that? Those are the strategies that we're developing right now. Some of it is education and presentation of the science. Some of it is taking a second look. Is there other opportunities to close up that, close up that time? Another theme was ending later in the school day at the secondary level, and the concern that that would have an impact on extracurricular activities, would push workload later into the evening, and it really wouldn't achieve the objective that we're, that we're seeking. So again, some of that is going to respond to additional education, what the science is, is saying. But it also requires us to look at the logistics of our school day and see if there's any opportunity to maybe mitigate those, those concerns. And then certainly, financial cost was one of them. The scenario that we debated that seemed to have, to be the most attractive back in 16, 17, absolutely has a, a financial cost. So is there things that we can do within the organization of the school day that would mitigate our reliance on, on additional transportation? So that's what we're working through right now. We are going to take a deeper dive into the Webster Central School District and to better understand from their administrators and their logistics people, how they were able to achieve a later start time, the hurdles that they overcame. So their next meeting, the, the objective is to have a panel discussion with Webster. How did you address this? Are there certain things that you did to mitigate, like, concerns? So that's, that'll be our next step. Hiring practices. Again, now that we have a defined scope of work for the remainder of the year, we're going to be meeting with, monthly with ReCenter and going through the different components of, of the playbook. Again, with the goal of, you know, March, April hiring season, to make sure that we're ready to implement any feedback that we receive from ReCenter and the reflection that we're able to, to take advantage of as, as a Hiring Practices Committee. Start time, I said what the next steps will be. And then the third bullet is the learning environments. And again, we're still, that's ongoing. We have not completed that yet. But we need to establish building level facility planning committees. And we're working with campus to be able to do that, to get a foundation on the bricks and mortar and the systems piece of it. And then we can expand into the program, program enhancement opportunities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Peddic and Mrs. Spagnola.
Thank you. Here is our goal and objective for this school year. As we look at supporting the whole child emotionally and physically, and the mental health, wellness, and dignity of all students, staff, and community, integral supporting each child each day, each way. So since we last came and were So since we last came and reported, we are excited to share the increased staffing that we see across all of our buildings, the names of our recent hires we've added to our mental health staff, again, as I said, across all of our buildings. Currently in the process of seeking some references for our district psychologist, a very, we had a strong applicant pool, so very excited about that, conducted some interviews last week. So as you see how the breakdown is across all of our buildings there, including what's not listed here, in a focus for a family navigator, that position held by Meg Goodman, to support and continue to support connecting our families to outside providers in needs at the 612 level. These, the addition of these resources, thanks to Betsy's work, and she's going to describe those in a few moments. But Betsy's work, looking at needs and assessing and talking to our mental health providers, working with our building administrators, mental health staff, what, where do we need boots on the ground to help us support our students in the area of mental health and wellness? And with that, I'll let Betsy take over.
Thank you, Deanna. And it's a, a large group of us that all do this together. I wouldn't want to take all of that credit. And I am so excited to talk about the work that we're going to be doing with Panorama. So we've been researching SEL screening tools for about a year, and we finally found one that is research-based, that is valid, and that is reliable. And it is Panorama. We vetted this through our K-12 mental health team. We vetted it through our mental health steering committee. We have talked to Panorama on many occasions now, and we're just really, really excited to go forward. So that's one of the things that we're going to be doing in terms of SEL. I'm also going to share with you tonight some of the SEL happenings that are going on throughout the district. It's amazing to see what everyone is doing. And I'm also going to talk about our partnership with Bavona, the Bavona Child Advocacy Center, and the lessons that they'll be doing with our kids this year. So, let me just shift here, sorry. So Panorama provides tools for pulling together all the data behind student success to make it visible. And so there, they have screening tools, we'll also call them surveys, to measure both student and adult social, emotional learning. And so we will be surveying our adults, and we will be doing that on Superintendent's Conference Day. And then we'll be surveying our students in May and June. And the beauty of these surveys is that they are customizable and that Panorama offers so much support behind all that we do. So it would be workshops, professional development, so that we can really dig into the data, and then we can come up with the interventions that are appropriate for working best with our students and our staff. We recognize that COVID has affected everyone on lots of different levels. And so we wanted to make sure that we aren't just supporting our students, but we're also supporting our faculty. So I wanted to show you here some of the potential survey topics. So under students' skills and competencies, these are some of the more individual areas that we can survey students on. These were just four of the topics that were mentioned. So growth mindset, self-management, social awareness, and learning strategies. And then in order to build that community, looking at student supports, environment, and wellbeing, we have cultural awareness, school climate, teacher and student relationships, which we know are so critical, school safety, equity, and inclusion. And that school safety piece is so important, too, because we know that when students feel better about where they are, it frees up space in their minds so that they truly can learn. We can choose between four and six different topics to put in any survey. So we will work together with our mental health staff, with our administrators, with our department leaders, to come up with what we really want to take a look at first. And then I'm thinking that the best thing that we would probably do is then survey, again, we would do these surveys three times throughout the year on those same areas so that you're always matching apples to apples. And we can also look at different areas, too, but we might do those in shorter snippets throughout the year. The mental health team will then be able to look at this data in the summer, and will really be able to take a deeper dive into it. We'll all be trained by the team from Panorama, and we are, we are really excited about this opportunity. I also wanted to share some of the things that are happening across the district in terms of social, emotional learning. So at Council Rock, the mental health staff push into the classrooms to teach Learning for Justice lessons. These lessons promote social justice and engage students in discussions about diversity. So they created a quilt when they were doing, exploring concepts of same and different. And the quilt represents, it had, every student has a square, and so they can see themselves within the larger community. In, in talking to Matt, I know that he shared that before, but I thought it was really important to bring it up again because it's so important for kids to see themselves as part of a greater community. They've also been doing a lot with their staff. As we mentioned, staff wellness is so important. So the support staff spruced up all the adult spaces. They've been doing Wellness Bingo, and they've also had some pretty neat prizes from what I understand. At FRES, they're doing circle time daily. They have interactive bulletin boards. I know that they did this in the past where you really take what you need. There are little sayings on the board, and you can take one of those sayings, and it can really fill your bucket. The mental health staff pushes in for brewing time. They also are doing the Learning for Justice lessons. And then they're having staff Friday feasts. At 12 Corners Middle School, where I'm located, we have something called What's the Brewin' Dooin'? And this is really neat. It's a huge teddy bear. We have a TCMS t-shirt on it and a mask, which I think is very important to point out. And we, every couple of weeks, we give that to a staff member who we really feel has gone above and beyond. Steve Leon has received it, Kristin Halligan has received it, and we gave it to the phys ed staff for being so flexible recently. We also did an MLK activity, which was school-wide after we did our CBT simulation. And it was just great because kids were coming down and they were asking, can I fill out one of the stars? Can I fill out one of the stars if they hadn't completed it? And so we were able to do that, and then we'll put them around the school. And then at DHS, they have Where's the Bear? And I know that Dr. Hall has done so much and continues to do so much with the Culture and Climate Committee, which is a combination of teachers and, and also admins, but the bulk of the committee are students. And so we really is able to get a lot from what the students are saying. And finally, we have a partnership with Bavona Child Advocacy Center this year. They presented to the PTSA on January 11th, and they will be doing direct instruction lessons to the students at the 38 level. So we have come up with a schedule, so they will be going at FRES February through mid-March. They will be pushing into the health classes at TCMS mid-March through May. And then at Council Rock, they will be doing indirect lessons in that they have, the mental health staff has gone through Train the Trainer Model through Bavona. And so because they had already created lessons and they've been doing them for so long, they're taking the pieces of Aaron's Law that weren't part of their lessons, and they will be delivering those to students in the later spring. And I'm going to turn it over to Deanna.
So quickly here, some things to come of what's next for us in the area of mental health and wellness. Obviously, you've heard a couple different times in terms of the survey implementation for Panorama. That'll be completed with staff in April. And then also, as you see on the spring conference day, not only the implementation, but also opportunities for our mental health staff to be trained so that they can, when we get to work over the summer, we can take a look at interpreting that data. So they have the training under their belt so they can look at that in a meaningful way. And then that'll also help us with our second bullet listed there. How do we continue to review and assess the needs? Where do we need our resources? Where do we make, need to make some shifts? We'll have some data behind some of the decisions, or to affirm some of the decisions, or what are our curricular needs, and how we actually implement some of those pieces. We're exploring some partnerships with some outside agencies. I believe, Betsy, you kind of used the phrase of, the equivalent of almost like a match.com for helping our, it is not match.com. It is, we are looking at how we can help connect our families with outside agencies. We continue to hear, I'm sure many of you hear, the access to outside mental health providers is limited, times availability, and it's help connecting people with folks who do take appointments, researches, insurances, just to help increase access to supports that are out there in the community. So more to come, and we look forward to touching base again. Thank you.
Thanks to everyone for that presentation. There's just a lot there. Our blueprint, as always, is available on the website. It is, is a single sort of focused document that helps keep us in line with what we're trying to do and it sort of dictates where our resources are applied, helps retain the focus. Great, great work being done there. Next up, item nine, we have reports. I'm sorry, did you want to make an account through the rest of the report?
I think you said it all. I mean, that, that is the work. It's so impressive what people are doing. And I think, you know, these are regular reports that are given. If anybody ever wonders what, what their investment is going towards and the high-quality work that's happening for kids and, and being done by staff each and every day, we report it. It's there regularly. We plan it. We include a lot of people in that conversation, then follow through on it, and it's great to see. So thanks to everybody that contributes to that.
It's the universal answer to what are you guys doing?
Yeah.
That's what we're doing.
I wanted, I don't want to let the moment pass. It's amazing presentation. And, you know, you speak so effortlessly about it, but to, to, to have the vision and actually execute and then go and evaluate is so much harder, I think, than people really understand. So it's amazing how clearly you speak about it and how passionate you are about it. And I think the partnership with Panorama seems amazing. So I just, I want to commend you. It was an excellent presentation, and there's so much work, I know, that goes on behind that. So it was really excellent. So it's nice to see it coming together.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Other comments? Next up, our financial reports, which we have received. They include the Executive Summary Budget Status Report for the period ending November 30th, 2021, the Treasurer's Report for the period ending November 30th, 2021, the Brighton Central School District's Single Audit Report for the year ending June 30, 2021, and finally, approval of a Finance Report, Extra Classroom Activity Funds, and Single Audit Report for the year ending June 30th, 2021. Myself, Andrea Castanza, and Christina Lee are on the Audit Committee and will continue to report that the dollars and resources are allocated correctly and accounted for perfectly. I will move, ask for motion to approve the financial reports as presented.
I'm just going to amend it. I'm on the Audit Committee, not Andrea.
Thank you, Karen. I appreciate that.
But I, so moved.
Okay. Moved by Karen. Thank you for the correction. Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Student Representative, Lila, congratulations on your All County, All Greater Rochester status. You were one of two Brighton young women. And also note, before you start, Gana Spagnola, who we just heard from, had a daughter on that as well for her school district. So congratulations to all of you. With that, the table is yours.
Thank you. So hello, everyone. And again, thank you for having me here to you tonight. So first, I'd just like to express my gratitude to the High Schools Black Student Union. So this morning, the club played a video and, that they prepared honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Everyone in the video was very well spoken, and it was just a nice commemoration of his life. Next, I want to applaud all the teachers with how they're handling the Omicron surge. I know that in my classes and in many others, there have been several students out. However, all the students are working hard and making class the best that it can be for both those in school and at home. Personally, all my teachers have been really great with kids on Zoom, making sure that it's easy for everyone to participate in class, even if they aren't actually in the class. Additionally, from the students' perspective, the new five-day quarantine seems like it's working out well. It is a big stressor having to miss school, so everyone is very thankful that the county and our district could adopt the shorter quarantine period. As most of you know, and it's been noted today already, the school has been handing out COVID tests to all the students. Like from my, like, what I've gotten from everyone is that everyone thinks it's like, they've been so useful and important. And not only does it catch more cases, but with the tests, it's like with the test being so hard to come by, it's giving everyone a sense of comfort. So that's just been great from my perspective, at least. So for lighter news, right now, there's a winter art show going on, displaying students' work throughout the high school. You can stop by through January 25th to see the art on display in the library, atrium, and auditorium foyer. Some additional exciting news is that Ham Jam is back on the schedule for this year. So for those of you who don't know, Ham Jam is Brighton High School's talent show. It is run by the student council, the senior student council, sorry, as a fundraising effort for their end-of-the-school-year activities. People are already talking about preparation for Ham Jam, and there is an interest meeting coming up at the end of the month. Ham Jam is slated for March 11th, so you should all come out and support the senior class. It's always a fun event. Another event that is back for this year, in collaboration with Brighton Wardrobe, is Say Yes to the Dress. So Say Yes to the Dress is an event where students can take home dresses and other formal attire for free. This year, it's All School Day, February 17th. So in past years, they've had hemming services, which is also like great for students who might not be able to afford that. It is a really great event, and everyone has fun trying on clothes with their friends. And so many people go home with new attire that they're really excited to wear for the end of the year for all the dances and stuff. So that's it for night, and that's it for tonight. And thank you all for having me here.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. Next, from the Board of Education. First, as we always talk about, I think at last count, there were 33 different statewide, countywide, and local committees and teams that we are all on. And we don't need to hear from all of them tonight given the time, but we'll hit a couple. From Monroe County School Board Association, Labor Relations, that is me and Andrea, that I do remember. That, that lunch is actually tomorrow, so I'll report on that in the first, first meeting in February. Information Exchange.
That is myself, and I did not have a chance to attend this past month. I got it. Sarah Visen-Gott from Harris Beach spoke, and she talked about the State Division of Human Rights issues involving students and staff, and particularly, one of the main points that she talked about was the statute of limitations for sexual harassment claims has been increased from one year to three year, and some of how that affects both employees, excuse me, and students and their families. And the next meeting is February 9th, and they're going to be talking about the 2024 solar eclipse. Rochester Student Science Center is planning educational planning. So I believe you're talking about two years. The big question is, will we still be wearing masks?
Exactly. Who knows, right?
And sunglasses.
All right, that was Information Exchange. Thank you, Julie. Legislative.
That's me. So the good news from the Legislative Committee is that we really are starting to see movement on the bus driver issue, both from the federal perspective and the state perspective. First, Governor Hochul has announced that they're looking at third parties being able to administer the CDL test. And what we know is that there is a dearth of testing sites that are available in order to obtain the license. And the other piece is that the federal government has announced that they are going to offer the carve-out that would allow bus driver, people seeking the school bus driver license to forego the under-the-hood training. We know that that keeps many people from obtaining the school bus, from getting that job and getting that license. But the thing that I'd actually like to focus on is the fact that our newest crop of legislators, Sarah Clark, Jeremy Cooney, our other local districts, have really taken up this cry in a, in a way frankly I haven't seen before. It's not that our other legislators weren't, weren't doing the work, but they are paying, I feel like, extra close and special attention to schools and the issues that we face at that policy level. And we really are seeing movement there that we haven't seen before, and that's, that's promising for us. Now we just have to get people to apply for the license so that they can take the jobs. Step two.
Thank you very much. BOCs, I'll just quickly note for BOCs, I received a report from Mark Kokonovich, who is our representative for BOCs. Just a couple of quick points. Monroe One had a very good response to increased outreach, including incentives and salary increases to fill multiple open staff positions, relevant to something we proposed in past tonight. Recently, 10 potential teaching assistant applications were reviewed, and is expected that most will be offered positions. I'll also note that the Monroe and BOCs Board of Ed continues to review all department and program budgets, and most recently reviewed the Eastern Monroe Career Center, multi-occupational focus in operations and maintenance budgets. Overall, they are struggling with some staff shortages, some staff absences related to COVID, and they're sort of trying to muscle through it as best they can. So that's just a very quick, up there. There's a few other things here, but that's a very quick update on BOSI's piece. We'll start with other board member reports, for anyone that wants to report out, if it's okay with you, Christina, I'll start with you, and we'll just work this way.
Sure. So I sit on the New York State School Board Association for Diversity Equity and Inclusion, and we've been meeting monthly for about a year now, and we're going to continue. We just got our charge for the next following year. And if you look at their website, you'll see that the most recent action just before the holiday season was to put out a statement from the New York School Board Association in support of a lot of the work that school districts are doing around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and culturally responsive and sustaining education, so.
Thank you. Esther?
I had the opportunity to attend the District-wide Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee meeting mid-December, and, well, we were visited by the Recenter Company, that was already discussed in the blueprint report, touching base on the progress of the culturally responsive practices in anti-racist education that we already have in place, and to see what they're doing up close, and really challenging what we're doing in this district, and continuing our effort and in progressing with this work. It's been really educational.
Excellent. Thank you. Karen?
I was able to attend the Curriculum Council meeting last week. Allison described it very well earlier, but the, the work is fascinating, and I, I really do appreciate the idea, you know, having sent kids K-12 through this district, about to start over with my kindergartner next year, of having a common language when it comes to teaching and learning. We know that teaching and learning is very different from kindergarten through 12th grade, but in essence, there's so many things that apply when you think about habits of mind on that K-12 spectrum, and it's fantastic to see the work being done.
Thank you. Susan?
My most recent thing I attended was the science program evaluation that we've worked on. We had our second or third meeting. Dr. Rio had set up. We actually had some data to review. We're looking to see how the curriculum is being implemented at the K-12 level. We have a series of goals we'd like to know from some survey data, and we're just starting to sort through that data to see how well our overall understanding of the New York State science standards are, and to make sure, with our diversity, equity, inclusion lens, to make sure how we're doing in that area as well.
Great. Thank you. Julie?
A lot of the meetings that I've attended have already been talked about, school start time. Wellness is meeting this Thursday, and we're making plans to do some parent and community education, which will be all by Zoom. And Special at Curriculum Review had to be rescheduled from this last week. And Say Yes to the Dress, I just wanted to add that if anybody has attire that they would like to donate, both for men or women, that you can drop it off either at the high school or at Brookside School between 9:00 and 12:00 Monday through Friday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll note that we had math curriculum review, and as you did, science, myself, and Andrea was on that, and continued through that process, ably led by Dr. Rio, and again, consistent with what you talked about, Sue, looking at some data, coming up with some questions, and going back and sort of reviewing next steps. So good math curriculum review, it's been very informative. Nicole, BTA?
So again, thank you for having me here to share some of the things teachers are doing. There's not, it's a very brief report because of the holiday recess, and then we just had about a week in order to put some things in. So it was two videos. I don't know if you got to see them, an orchestra video, and then these two wonderful photographs of students, fourth graders, playing their instruments at Front Row. And they are still having weekly lessons from Chris Dozier, Dave Myers, Bernie Heffron, and Lori Isham. And you can kind of see the joy in the little girl hugging her violin there. At the high school, and actually, while Lila was sitting next to me, she actually did the experiment I'm going to tell you about. She's like, I did that. So students in Brad Allen's AP Physics T, they wanted to figure out how to get two rolls of toilet paper to actually land at the same time. So one was dropped, the other was held. So they calculated ratios, set it up, and then did slow-motion videos, which I don't know if you watched it, but there was a lot that went into the thinking behind it. And again, Lila was part of it, so that makes it an extra special. We'll have a longer report next time.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Peter, PTSA?
I have also a quick report. Our activities or programs continue unabated, and we're status quo.
Thank you. Dr. McAllen, Superintendent?
A few different items to mention. First of all, in terms of COVID, I thought, I'm always so struck by Lila, the youngest, most inexperienced person at this table yet, the, all, no offense to any of you, all due respect, greatest voice of reason, right? Like, what a great perspective. And her mention of people just kind of bearing with Omicron surge and where things were at, I think was really, just so thoughtfully stated. And so I'd repeat the same thing. People have really figured it out, pulled together, covered a lot of classes. Staff has done a really great job. Parents have been exceptionally patient and helpful as well, and figured it out. Kids are taking it very seriously and understand where we're at, and it's, it's, you know, we're going on two years now of this, and so for kids that Lila's around, the bulk of their high school experience is, is COVID-related. So I'm so impressed with how they've handled it K through 12. I'm really glad to tell you that today is the best attendance since the highest point or worst point for us on January 7th, and we're seeing a downward trend each and every day that gets better. That shouldn't be, you know, give any sort of false sense of confidence. People still need to be vigilant. Masking is still so important, obviously, vaccination, boosting, boosting. If people think, you know, if I, I can't do it now because it's too late, or it'll take too long, my understanding is that as soon as you are boosted, pretty much immediately, the, the impact is there and the protection is there. And so please go ahead and do that as well. So I, I just, I think people have handled that very, very well. Of course, you may have heard we have a vote next week. I'm not sure if that's cleared everybody, but on Tuesday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in this building, obviously awfully important, we think, opportunity for people to participate in, in that process. Budget, the numbers will be coming, as I mentioned, we'll have a sense, we're just getting those now, what that looks like, and be able to report on that at the next meeting. And just reminded people to be prepared for remote days. We don't have snow days in the calendar this year. In a sense, our snow days were the day before Thanksgiving, December 23rd. Any of the other days off that we've been able to take in a tight calendar year, so we'll go remote on those days. We feel like people are ready for that, and we'll see how that works. Of course, no predictions here, no spoons under pillows, no putting things in toilets or any whatever else people do, or $20 bills my kids leave me. None of that will work, and don't worry, nothing is coming, but just want to make sure, remind people to be ready for that, should, should it come up. We do live in Western New York, so certainly a possibility. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, some bids to approve. I'll quickly read A through E on the bid section under number 10. Again, these are cooperative bids for equipment repair and maintenance, school lunch food, custodial supplies, medical trainer supplies, and health and safety supplies. Obviously, he had that information posted for us. Motion to approve the bids.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, approval on some, basically pro forma first read policies. First one, Policy 6213, Personnel Registration and Professional Learning. Policy 8130, Instruction, Equal Educational Opportunities. And Policy 8220, Instruction, Career and Technical Occupational Education. Can I do these as one?
Yes.
Yes, I'm okay to do that? We've all had the first read policies. By definition, they're a first read. We'll have a second look at, have a chance to vote on them after second read. Motion to approve the three first read policies as listed here.
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Christina. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Finally, on the consent agenda, there's a series of personnel changes that we've received, approval of recommendations from Committee on Special Education, approval of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, and finally, a gift, an anonymous gift in the amount of $500 to assist a Brighton Central School student for the cost of the eighth grade French class trip to Quebec, which is very nice. Thank you to whomever that was. Motion to approve the consent agenda A through D.
So moved.
Moved by Julie?
Second.
Seconded by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Finally, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.